Hi, everyone. Welcome to the Auburn School Committee meeting for December 4th, 2024. This meeting is being conducted in person and is being recorded by the Auburn Cable Television. All are welcome to join us in person here at 5 West Street. All supporting materials that have been provided to members of this body is available on the town's website, and the public is encouraged to follow along using the posted agenda. Thank you. Could we stand for the Pledge of Allegiance? Please.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America, to the republic where it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
The vision of the Auburn Public Schools is to educate and prepare students for the opportunities and challenges of a changing world. We'll create, maintain, and support an environment that fosters a sense of belonging for all students in our schools, respecting race, color, sex, religion, national origin, sexual orientation, gender identity, homelessness, poverty, spoken language, and ability.
All right, thank you. Anyone here for citizens' comments? Seeing no strangers in the crowd, take that as a no. Turn it over to you, Dr. Chamberlain, for special recognitions.
Thank you, Madam Chair. So this evening, we would like to take a moment to recognize Special Olympics. Special Olympics has recognized Auburn Public Schools as a Unified Champion School District. This honor highlights the dedication and passion of our students, families, and staff that they show in building an inclusive environment for all. Every school in the Auburn Public Schools having signed Memorandums of Understanding to become an official Unified Champion School in Massachusetts. Auburn Public Schools has demonstrated an unwavering commitment to inclusion and unity. This collective dedication across the district has earned us the Unified Champion School District status.
Wow.
Mr. Walton, anything you want to add to that? You've got to go up to the microphone.
I actually brought something because I didn't know if you were going to present tonight. So two of our staff members were invited to, three of our staff members, October 11th, were invited to Special Olympics North America. And like Dr. Chamberlain said, we received the Unified Champion School District Award. So there's a couple of facts. In 2022, the high school was recognized, the national banner from Special Olympics. Then in 2023, the middle school received their national arm. There's three components to be in a unified school is unified sports, inclusive leadership, whole school engagement. So for unified sports, Auburn currently has a unified basketball team at the high school and middle school. We have a unified track team. We have unified PE at the high school. And then recently, they started Unified Bocce at the middle school. For inclusive youth leadership, we have Unified Club, Rockets to Rockets at Swiss AMS in the high school. We have an inclusive student council, and we have members of youth activation committee. For whole school engagement, we participate in Kindness Week, awareness activities, Unified Sports Park Valley, Fans in the Stands, Polar Plunge, which is coming up, School Day Games, which is big in the community. Recently, two years ago, we started Buddy Bingo, and Brooke does an amazing job at that. And then my favorite is the Unified Staff versus Students game. Those are the three components that we, and the categories that we qualify for, to become a Unified District. Thank you.
Great. Thank you. Are you participating in the Polar Plunge?
I was the first one last year.
Is that a no then?
She's asking about this year.
Yeah. All right, thank you. Any questions or comments? Just great job.
Mr. Walton, yeah, it's great. I know there are many people involved in this, but I do think we need to recognize Ally DeLuca.
Yes.
No, it's, you know, Greg's a great leader in this regard. Ally DeLuca has spearheaded so many committees to keep things, all of these initiatives going. And there are many, many names involved, but a lot of things to go around, so.
Yeah, it's a great group. Ally's been doing it for years and years, too. So it's not a new thing for her either.
I do have one additional recognition tonight, Madam Chair, and somebody's going to be a little upset, but that's okay. So tonight, we have one more special recognition. As you know, Joe Fahey, my friend, will retire at the end of December. Joe has served the Auburn Public Schools for 21 years. During that time, Joe has been a steadfast resource and supporter of several superintendents, principals, teachers, community members, and certainly our students. Joe's always had an easygoing manner, but it's really the thoughtfulness that he puts into his work that makes him stand apart. Joe never just thinks about the job or the task. Joe thinks about the people in the work, that the work will impact. He's always been committed to making sure that people felt supported and that their needs were met. Joe has worked each day to ensure that our buildings are clean, well-maintained, and even more importantly, safe. As the lead of our district safety team, Joe's been instrumental in developing positive relationships with the police department and the fire department, and he's worked to be on the cutting edge of safety for our kids. Joe's also provided assistance in multiple ways to the town of Auburn, as well as so many organizations we'll never know about. Several trips to Disney, if I recall, with a lot of instruments in a trailer. So Joe has this, he's perfected the ability to fly under the radar, as we often say, like, Joe, where have you been? And there, but there are many, many folks who have benefited from his generosity that will go unnamed because we honestly don't know how many there are. Joe's been great to work with. We thank him for all he's done. He will be missed, and we will wish him well in his retirement. We wish you all good things as you embark on this new adventure, Mr. Fahey.
Come on up, Joe. Come on up, Joe. Come here, get up here. So in recognition and gratitude, this certificate's to Joe Fahey for his over 20 years of dedicated service to the students and staff. No, I didn't answer you. To the students and staff of Auburn Public Schools, your commitment and care have made a difference in the lives of our students, and we thank you for all you have done.
Thank you.
If I could reach you, I would hug you.
And don't worry, Joe. Let your family know that this will live in perpetuity on ACTV.
And don't worry, Joe.
And let your family know that this will live in perpetuity on ACTV. So you can watch it whenever you want.
And YouTube. It's on YouTube.
Yep, and you know what? I've seen Joe firsthand Saturday afternoon, helping AYFS, you know, get ready for stuff.
Oh, absolutely. Weekends, yeah. He's got everything, so.
And I think we should add up all the money he's actually saved us over his tenure here. It would be millions and millions.
He might want it as a, as a giveaway. And then we have real budget trouble.
Yeah, yeah, yeah. Good point. Well, thank you, Joe, for all you've done. You will be very missed, so. But you're not gone yet. We're going to work you to the bone.
That's right. Especially about 3:00 AM.
Yeah. Yeah, tonight. Yeah. All right, we'll take the heat off and move on to acceptance of the minutes from November 20th.
I'll make a motion to accept the minutes from November 20th, 2024.
Second. All those in paper?
Aye.
Is it both? We have no student reps tonight. All right, Dr. Chamberlain, I'll turn it over to you for the superintendent's report.
All right, so we don't have students spotlighting. We're going to move on to our budget presentations for this evening. So Mr. Keller and I are going to join the leadership team over there, and we'll present from the podium. All right. Oops. Good evening, Madam Chair, Dr. McCrillis, Mrs. Wren, Ms. Rayfield, members of the leadership team. I just want to say again how proud I am to stand before you as the superintendent of the Auburn Public Schools. It is always amazing to me to be part of such a team of people that care about kids and care about community and care about making this the best place for people to learn and to work. I want to thank this team of people over here who are selfless, tireless, and dedicated to the work that they do with kids. I certainly couldn't do the work that I do without all of them, and our students are the real beneficiaries of having this team of people. So thank you to everyone here. We also hope that in creating this budget, we have respected your support, as well as the support we've gotten from the community, which has been overwhelmingly positive for so-so many years. As is our way, we begin to discuss our hopes for the district with our mission, our vision, and our commitment, which we begin every meeting with, as well as the tenets of our strategic plan. This continues to be a working document that drives our daily decisions. We strongly believe that at each school, from preschool through the high school, that we need guideposts to keep us focused and rowing in the same direction. We believe that this does this. And this evening, you're going to hear from these folks some commonalities, and that's not by accident, but by design, that we are all working in the same direction for the good of our kids. We, several meetings ago, we discussed what school committee priorities were for this budget, maintaining our class sizes, continue to focus on our anti-bullying initiatives, training and resources, maintaining positions that focus on the social-emotional well-being of our kids, obviously, meeting our contractual obligations and wanting our staff to feel supported, and respecting the ongoing financial support that we receive from the town's people of Auburn and town leadership. This evening, you're going to hear a bit more about some of these initiatives that we are committed to and are reflected in our strategic plan. This includes social and emotional well-being of our kids, universal design for learning, restorative practices, language-based learning, and making sure that our kids have updated curricula. These are prominent and foundational to the work that we do every day, and we believe that by working together with overlapping initiatives gives us more power in the work that we do with kids all the time. So a number of considerations as you review this budget. We've maintained our staffing levels to meet the class-size recommendations of the school committee, and again, to meet the needs of our special education students. Our October 1st student enrollment counts were used in the decision-making process. Materials and supplies have been nearly level-funded, and you'll see in the presentations from the leadership team places where there are, where things have increased or decreased. There are two new positions reflected in that budget, a special educator at Swanson Road and a district-wide speech and language pathologist. And we continue to emphasize the staff that allows support to us, the social and emotional well-being of our kids. All of our instructional assistants and ABAs have been noted in their current assignments, but certainly next year, there will be movement, as we do every year. We look where students are moving, grade-wise or school-wise, and we adjust the staffing accordingly. We've level-funded our grant monies using the FY25 amounts for the 240 grant, Title I grant, that are used as offsets, so that that helps the impact of the budget. We've projected our Medicaid reimbursement to be $160,000, as adjusted and approved at town fall meeting. That could change. Kaitlyn O'Neill's done a lot of great work, working with Mr. Walton, to increase our Medicaid reimbursements by making sure we're filing for things, so that could go up a little bit. Circuit breaker is conservatively at 70% for budgeting purposes, and our bus application fees will be utilized to provide $100,000 from that revolving account to offset this budget. And we continue to use other revolving accounts. Building rentals, satellite and galaxy, preschool, and athletic revolving accounts are also used to offset this, along with school choice, which we currently have 78 seats filled, which was previously approved by you, the committee. One big variable in this budget is that our current contract with AA Transportation is expiring in June of 2025. Mrs. Stanek is in the process of preparing the RFP and the bid for them, and for now, we've budgeted for a 10% increase. We actually did add in a 12th bus, along with a 10% to kind of, we can adjust as that, as we learn more about that. But she is going out with that soon, and we're hoping maybe by mid-February, we'll have information, more substantial information on that. We accounted for a 5% increase in special education private school tuitions for students in out-of-district placements, and we get that guidance from the state with what we should use for an increase for those tuitions. We continue with the staffing of our social and emotional and mental health positions, and there are some increases in electricity, fuel, and particularly contracted services, where we have folks that come in and do works, work in our building. So I think Mr. Fahey has two pages because of that. Just not calling him out, but I think he does. Obviously, we have to meet our contractual obligations. I've noted here our oil, electricity, and natural gas pricing, which we do have contracts on, but depending on usage, that can vary, right, with what we end up paying for each of those. We continue to work with town, the town around our solar credits from the rooftop arrays at the middle school and high school, and there's also a project in Rutland. I don't think those have materialized the credits that we had hoped, but they are, we are hoping that the coming year could be better. So projective offsets total $3,657,998.23. And you'll see, when the folks come up to give their presentations, any numbers that are highlighted in yellow are areas of increase from last year, from this year, and areas of decrease are highlighted in green. All other areas have been level-funded, so we're not going through and reading every line item if it stayed the same. It's only when there's been a change. And finally, a few variables that I want you to keep in mind as we look at this. First, to remember that this is a draft budget, and it may have to come back to you in January based on some of these things. So student enrollment can certainly impact our staffing, as it has this year in our kindergarten, right? We only had three kindergarten classes at Bryn Mawr. We also know that there are additional buildings that will be going online up on Tinker Hill, which is a new housing development, along with potential for housing over in Perry Place, which I don't have any final numbers on that. So thus, we've maintained our current staffing levels because we don't know where enrollment will leave us. Chapter 70, I spoke with Mr. Kazanovich today. He says he may have some idea of what our funding will be toward the end of January. So again, that could be a variable, if there's any significant change. I know at our last meeting, I told you that it didn't appear that our EL funding for students was going to continue through this school year. I was at another meeting yesterday, and they said it's highly possible that the funding will continue through June. When will we know that? They don't know. So again, that's something that has to go through the legislature, but that certainly could have an impact on the budget. Again, I already spoke about going out to the bid for transportation and a final bid, hopefully by maybe mid-February. And we, as we have always done, we work to provide programming for students with special needs in-house. We can certainly, not only is that a cost savings, but what it does is it keeps our kids in the community with their friends and their neighbors, which is what we want. However, this year, as you know, we have a student in a residential placement, and there is a potential for a second student to be going to a residential placement. So that is certainly another big financial hit for the budget. So this evening, each of these folks will present to you their section of the budget and talk about, again, just the increases and decreases in certain areas, along with some of their thoughts and initiatives and focus areas for the coming school year. So we'll start with Mr. Keller, Assistant Superintendent.
Thank you, Dr. Chamberlain. Thank you, School Committee. So I have the opportunity to speak to you about initiatives and efforts that will take, undertake pre-K through 12 in the next school year, which you will hear throughout the night from each of the principals. So to start with, I think you're all aware that the health and PE standards from the state, the framework, was updated for the first time since 1999. We have spent the past year, and we'll do that into the summer, working on aligning those vertically and horizontally. We've got a grant from the state to work with Light House Consulting that has had our educators going out to professional development, as well as having the consultants work with our staff to really develop that, those frameworks, as I said, horizontally and vertically. So we're, we'll be implementing that to begin the school year. That's one of our major initiatives. Also, our K-8 math textbooks are coming off license at the end of this year, and so we have spent the past 14 months or so examining our current textbooks, what the strengths and weaknesses are. I think you also know I've talked about a major initiative from the state, as well as in Auburn, is high-quality instructional materials, making sure that any textbooks that we have are on approved list from the state, which is, as I mentioned, is a major initiative. And so that has been something that we have spent a lot of time identifying and looking at different textbooks that meet that criteria and that will serve us well moving forward. Dr. Chamberlain has worked extensively with the town, looking at CIP funding that will allow us to take that on. As you can imagine, K-8 textbooks is a pretty sizable amount of dollars, and so we're excited to be able to look at that as a possibility moving forward. The third item on here is we've continued to work on growing a culture of looking at data, improving, as well as schools, as well as the district, and finding out what our strengths and areas of improvement are, and building that into how we work. Three years ago, actually longer than that, we did an equity audit, as you will recall, many years ago. Three years ago, we had the Anti-Defamation League work with our district as a whole that was on Zoom. And in the past couple of years, we've been working with an organization called Perennial Education that's been working with our leadership team. Our next efforts are to bring all of those culturally responsive practices into the classrooms, into the school, and into the district and the way we operate. Mr. Walton, Mr. Carlson, and Dr. Lopez, and I have been working with Landmark Schools on their outreach program, establishing consistent approaches to language-based learning needs, so identifying students who need that additional repetition and consistent research-based practices, and making sure teachers are equipped to be able to deliver those on a consistent basis. The next item on here is expanding primary source. So this year, we piloted using primary sources, social studies curriculum in grades 5, 6, and 7. We are looking to expand that into grades 3 and 4, so that we have grades 3 through 7 using a really culturally relevant, important social studies curriculum. And going back to the data piece I mentioned earlier, making that who we are and how we look at things, we've heard from teachers, we've looked at our MCAS data and identified writing as an area for improvement. And so this year, one of our major initiatives is building a writing curriculum or having an organization work with us on establishing a consistent writing curriculum in grades K through 5. And we're looking to next year, continue to develop that, as well as bring that into grades 6 through 8. And as you know, UDL has been a part of our school district for a long time, and that will continue to be so. That's how, you know, going back to the data piece, that's how we work and how we function, and making sure that we're addressing and meeting the needs of our students in a variety of ways. So continuing to support the work of universal design for learning. So those are the major instructional and curricular and learning initiatives that we have. You'll notice there is a decrease in professional development. Of course, you know, it's, you don't want to decrease professional development, but ultimately, in trying to meet the needs of this budget and not have to reduce positions, that was an area that we decided would make sense to reduce. Questions?
Any questions? No? You don't?
Okay, turn it over to Mr. Walton.
Thank you. So thank you, guys. So some of my line items are going to be, not line items, areas of focus are going to be repetitive, so Mr. Keller was speaking about, and Dr. Chamberlain spoke about also. So the first one is contribute to provide services to social-emotional students within the district. So it's not also within the districts that I, my department would like to focus on, but it's also to provide the families with the resources outside of the school, so that they can work with us inside of the school to get the services that the students need. Last year, I created a document that has all the resources locally for parents, but as we have meetings during the year, I always bring up to parents and remind them, you know, we can diagnose, we can't diagnose, we can test, we could assume, we can have a suspected social-emotional disability, but sometimes the child just needs a neuropsych or an evaluation. So I've been having parents, you know, reach out to their resources instead of always putting back on us. This year was a big rollout for us with the new IEP. DESI gave us a big task, and it was to bring the new IEP to our district. We had to work with Power Spad. It was a lot of kinks to work out, because, you know, the format changed. It was a lot of work by my special education teachers, related service staff, and so far, the feedback that I received from parents is that they actually liked the new format. It's easy to read, they like the flow of it. But for the staff, and it is a lot more writing, we don't just, can't click buttons now and check off yes and put Xs and boxes. So it is a good way to look at the services and what the accommodations and modifications that students need. Thanks to my assistant, Kaitlyn, and Randy and Eric. This year, we also rolled out a new way of sending our IEPs out through DocuSign. So now we're able to send our IEPs out a lot quicker, and so far, the return rate is really high. We're getting them back. Before a couple of days last year, I could tell you it would be months before we received the IEP. We're saving on paper, we're saving on stamps, so we're saving a lot of money there. So thank you, Eric. Alan did touch on this. This year, we're providing some language-based strategies for our special education teachers. And for me, I was really excited, because when Landmark came in, it wasn't just our special education teachers, our general education teachers were excited also. So it's not only using it for our special education students, it's all students in general. So we want to continue with that next year, and I'm hoping that this can help, all the resources that they're providing for us can be used. We want to continue to provide professional development for our teachers in reading and writing, and some of this comes through Landmark. One of the things that we did this year was look at the data at the middle school. We looked at reading and writing, and we saw that there was a deficit there. So we're looking at our practices, currently evaluating our practices, and we want to provide development, professional development for our teachers to enhance those services in the classroom. The next area of focus for me, this is a personal one, is increase the community engagement. It's, the engagement's there when it's a fun activity, but when we're providing trainings or resources, the engagement is pretty low. So this year, we have a new CPAC. Sometime this year, they'll come to the school committee. So I want to work with them and through Unified Sports and Special Olympics to increase the engagement with the families. And the last area of focus is to continue to provide professional development for related staff, and I'll talk a little bit more about that. But, you know, we want to increase our related services, too, not just looking at the academics, you know, we want to look at OT, speech, PT. Changes to line items, and of course, I have a lot. So collaborative memberships, it was a $1,000 increase because the tuition, the rates went up. For special education in town transportation, Dr. Chamberlain touched on this, we're anticipating a 10% increase, so that's that increase. For tuition, public schools, we have a decrease. That was a student that we had out of district who moved on. And tuition for non-public schools, as Dr. Chamberlain touched on this, is we had a student in a residential placement and a potential student in a residential placement next year. Tuition for special education collaboratives, we had a huge decrease, and that's the initiative of keeping our students in the district. For new positions, we're looking to hire a speech and language pathologist. So two years ago, I met with my related service staff, and I knew this was coming, you know, there's been an increase in our related services. I did some, a lot of research with them, and it's not just Auburn, it's across the country. And, but the data is showing it's due to still the effects of COVID. So this year, we were able to get a, provide those services with the SLPA, which is a speech and language pathologist assistant, but we do need a speech and language pathologist across the district. Any question?
Any question?
Everyone?
Yeah.
Through the chair. Just a quick question, so I understand. We have one student residential and one potential, correct? So will that number change if that potential student does not?
I think that's included.
Is it?
Well, because it's, one may not end up staying.
Correct.
Yes. So.
It doesn't include two.
It doesn't.
Only one. Okay.
And the one wasn't a student that we sent out.
Okay. All right, perfect. Thank you.
Yeah.
I have a question as well.
Yeah, before. At what age do they age out of us, like paying for their tuition?
It depends on the program. So if you're, some programs more for students with autism or developmental disabilities is age 22. Some students, we actually have a couple of students graduating this year from their programs. They can graduate, or they can stay there until they age 22.
Thank you.
Any more questions? Thank you all, sir.
I'm good.
All right. Thank you.
Thank you.
Turn it over to my big brother, Joe.
The man of the hour. He has three slides.
Mr. Walton's always a tough act to follow. You could at least move, you could have just. Yeah. Thank you.
Don't touch anything.
Thank you, everybody. Looking forward to next year's budget. I really am. Three key points. Continue building security, district-wide safety team, upgrade the parking lot out of high school, and energy improvement projects district-wide. If you notice the picture that I chose to put up there, the before and after, this summer, we had, we replaced our track at the high school, as everybody knows. But the important thing that people need to try to get across is that when we built our high school almost 20 years ago, the foundation that was put on there, it was second to none. So what I mean by that is when the contractor came in and replaced the turf, I mean, the rubber, he noticed how well-maintained it was underneath. Basically, it's a road, and this road was in perfect condition. There wasn't, there wasn't a heave, there wasn't a crack. It was, it was perfect, which wasn't good for him because there's no change riders. It would have cost us a lot of money if that was the case, because they make their money really on the change riders. So, but it was credit to, I think, the work that was involved 20 years ago to make this project that we did, that cost about $288,000. Acceptable, because it could have been a lot more, so. Now, you'll see no, no, no green in mine, I'm sorry. But the changes- But the changes to the line items are pretty basic. We pretty much went up 3% across the board on our natural gas, electrical, sewer and our custodial supply. Now, you probably wondered about the sewer, but as I stated before, what goes in must come out. So that's, those are the rates that we get from our Blackstone. That's, that's why they're as high as they are. Over at a middle school, the same thing, electrical, water and sewage. We bumped it up as Dr. Chamberlain stated that we do have a contract that we, we partnered with, with the town for the electrical and the natural gas. That's set to expire the following year, so they'll be negotiating that throughout next year. Line items to Swanson Road, same thing, electrical and custodial supply. System here, 3%. I call that the cost of living, but hopefully it won't be higher than that. Pakachog, same thing, electrical and sewer. What goes in must come out. Bryn Mawr, the same thing. Electrical might be a little bit higher because that's actually an exciting project. Bryn Mawr is pretty much all heat pumps, upper and lower. So really excited to see how that's going to turn out at, at the end of the year. We should save on our, on our fuel consumption, but the trade-off is we're going to, we're going to pay a little bit more for electricity. But I guess you'll get that constant comfort level, which, which we all need. Central office, same thing, electrical, district-wide telephones. We bumped that up to 30,000. Our telephones are pretty unique and I think I talk about this every year. We have, we have the function that no matter where you are in, in our district, if you call 911, it goes right to the police station and it tells you exactly what room you're in. So it, it takes out that, that middle person. So they know right out of the gate, they're going to room 212 at Pakachog. So it's, it potentially could save a life. So it's, we've got some great features that's out there. Building security, we upped that $10,000 just because of the fact of, you know, just the cost of business, you know, cameras, technology is so expensive. But it's, it's where we're at today. Fire extinguishers, pretty much the same. Trucking gas, it's not just for one vehicle. We got famous Rocket One and Rocket Two. That's requires some maintenance. But it's, it's the best it could be. But in closing, I can't thank you guys enough. Can't thank my superintendent, although she told me nothing tonight. Want that on record, nothing. But no, it's been a pleasure, really has. With some great colleagues. Well, most great. But, but in closing, I say it every year, I have a great staff. I think our custodians are a backbone of our community and I don't want to take any credit for me retiring, but I got a custodian, Joel Creelman. Been here for 17 years, started part-time. He's head custodian, second shift. The guy would do anything for you, right? Shows up, I've even seen him on a Saturday when he has to be working, doing work. He's just had that commitment because all the guys do. Because, you know, it's just not, it's kids first. And they all put that, they all put that first. So I thank you.
Thank you. I have one question. Do we contact you in retirement to let you know about the Bryn Mawr sewage pumps? Excited to see how that shakes out.
Well, actually, my granddaughter goes there, so I'm excited. That's not why we did the heat pumps, by the way.
Give me an update and I'll let you know.
I'm moving, you're unhappy.
Oh, perfect.
You guys are in great hands. They had, they had a team together, they hired Greg Gregoire, who's hit the, he's, he's great. You'll have no problems at all. You'll forget my name.
No, we are. No way, never.
Hi.
Hi.
Since we're talking about Joe tonight, I just want to say too, Joe will tell you that he's not very technologically literate, but he has brought the tech, their department forward tremendously in technology. And we have worked really closely together through these years and we will definitely miss him, although we do look forward to working with our new director of facilities, Glenn. Yeah, we'll see. Report back next year. But looking at next year's budget, yep, there's some yellow there, but the technology is technology. As we look forward to next year, you've heard me talk about this now, we're doing a lot with enhancing student data privacy, making sure that our, our student data is safe and not just our students, but our staff. And just network security, student security is paramount to what we do these days. We are, we have to be aware of it at all times and we never know when something is going to pop up that, that could be dangerous to the way that we conduct school. So a lot of what we do and a lot of what goes into these, some of these lines is trying to keep up with the latest threats and there are new ones every day and making sure that our hardware and our software is up to date and capable of protecting the daily activities in the schools. So as we look at this, you'll see the dues line, that went up slightly because our, my main organization I belong to raised theirs. But computer maintenance services, that's a line item that directly relates to hardware and service contracts for the hardware. So firewalls, servers, switches, that kind of stuff. Those numbers are, they go up every year as the manufacturers raise their rates and, and those types of things. There's really not much new there, but the numbers do, do continue to rise and unfortunately we have to stay with them to, to keep everything running well. Computer ma, that's computer maintenance services. Computer software, that is pretty much everything else that we do in the district. All, all of the services that students use in their classrooms, Power School, iReady, a lot of that type of stuff, Schoology, all of these very core features. Again, most of this stuff now is software as a service, so we don't own it. It used to be the good old days was you'd buy it and you'd own it and wouldn't have to pay for it every year, but these days, everything is in the cloud and that's good and bad. And everything is an annual fee. So those numbers, they continue to rise. Last year, we were lucky and those numbers went down because we were able to eliminate some software that we no longer needed. And I think that's an important point. We look at every piece of software every year when we do this and we decide based on usage, if we have access to that data, if this is a piece of software that's still needed to be used in the district because times change. Some, you know, something that was great four years ago, teachers may have moved on to something new, we don't need that anymore. We can see that in usage and we can decrease it. But all of that software is carefully inspected and made sure that it is necessary to the running of our school. And it is not just technology, it could be DocuSign as, as an example. All of that stuff that gets implemented throughout the year as it's technology-related comes to us. And we've seen increases in areas related to EL as those numbers have continued to increase and we have to respond to that. And special ed, as, as new and exciting things come out to help those students, we have to help respond to that. So the numbers climb, it's unfortunate, no one likes to see the yellow, we're all ashamed of the yellow, but it, it is the truth. And it's all to making sure that our kids are safe, that they have the technology resources in their hands and in their teacher's hands to make sure that they can be successful in their classroom, so. There we go.
Any questions for Mr. Bouvier?
Great, thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. I am proud to be presenting as the business manager this evening and want to highlight the following. I'm excited to continue the collaboration with central office staff to manage and allocate grant funding to supplement and offset our budget needs. Currently, I'm working with Mr. Bouvier and Dr. Chamberlain on our Apple initiative to ensure the best products and pricing for our district, utilizing our CIP funding. Having worked with Mr. Fahy over the last nine years as the PAC principal and now collaborating as, collaborating as the business manager, he will be greatly missed. I'm looking forward to working with our new facilities director, Glenn Gregoire, and learning from him and his prior experiences in managing our CIP projects. As always, student safety is a top priority and I will continue to work with our transportation vendors, crossing guards and school resource officers to ensure such. I am proud to report the business office is fully staffed. And I'm staffed with dedicated, knowledgeable and efficient employees. They are amazing and we are building a fabulous team. Some examples of our initiatives for cost savings and increased productivity include implementation of the FMX facilities program, which I will highlight a little later this evening. Arbiter pay for athletic officials. Direct deposit of admission fees through the GoFan app. Employee self-service for cost savings and ease of use for employees with readily available payroll documents such as pay stubs and W2s. I'm also working with Rico and Eric Bouvier on our, with our copy machine vendor to eliminate fax machines for cost savings of paper fax machines, which believe it or not are kind of dinosaurs, and the cost of those supplies. We are also obtaining and uploading vendor email addresses for ease of ordering all of our supplies. As we have shared, we have budgeted a 10% increase in transportation costs as I go out for bid for transportation. However, we have decreased the amount for community service learning transportation to $10,000 as the full amount is not needed. And lastly, I'm not requesting any new positions, just keep your fingers crossed that everybody stays. Thank you for all of your support and I can answer any questions you may have.
Nope.
I'll be keeping my fingers crossed.
All right, I'll pass it over to Ms. Carlson, principal of Pakachog.
Thank you. Thank you for welcoming to my very first budget presentation here in Auburn. I just want to say it's been a wonderful first few months for me here in Auburn. I have to say the staff administration have been so welcoming and it's such a dedicated staff that I work with them. I, I feel very fortunate that I'm at Pakachog. As you know, Bryn Mawr and Pakachog are sister kindergarten through second grade schools. So there are a lot of similarities between Brooke's presentation and my presentation. I'll try to be concise. As we look ahead to the fiscal year 2026, there are several key areas of focus that we will continue to prioritize in order to strengthen the educational experiences for our students. And the first thing I would say is the Empowering Writers Program. We will maintain our commitment to the Empower Writing Program. I know it's already been referred to this evening. This allows us to differentiate support for students at varying levels of writing proficiency. This program has been valuable in starting to meet the needs for individual students and we ensure, we want to ensure it's continued integration into our curriculum and expansion across the grade levels. And then also implementation and training for a new math curriculum. Alan again had referred to that earlier this evening. That will be a major focus as we are moving forward. Although we are in the process right now, or I shouldn't say we, the committee led by Alan actually is in the process of choosing the best math curriculum for Auburn, K to eight. We are committed to providing a comprehensive training for our teachers to ensure they can effectively integrate this curriculum into their classrooms. And this training will support our goal of improving math literacy and providing students with a strong foundation in mathematical concepts. And then of course, our social emotional learning continues to be an important emphasis on our schools. We are incorporating positive behavioral supports, restorative practices and strategies to strengthen student relationships. This is central to fostering a supportive, inclusive environment where all of our students feel safe, valued and capable of success. And by furthering embedding SEL into our daily practices, we aim to continue to build upon a school climate that nurtures emotional well-being and academic growth. And then finally, the continued implementation of the Universal Design for Learning, or we refer to as UDL, practices. Our UDL coaches from both Pakachog and Bryn Mawr have been leading professional development for their colleagues and continue to collaborate with each other. We have many great UDL practices in place already and are expanding and updating our practices for the future through the use of UDL coaches, professional development in our professional learning communities. And all these initiatives reflect our ongoing commitment to student success, both academically and socially. As always, our goal is to support our students in becoming not only skilled learners, but also confident, compassionate individuals who are prepared for the challenges ahead. Please note that there are no changes to line items nor any new positions being requested at Pakachog for the school year, the fiscal year 2025, 2026. Are there any questions I can answer for you? Thank you so much. So I will turn it over to Mrs. Brooke Everly.
I'm always envious of everyone who can come up here and speak without reading their notes. It'll be a skill I will have to learn. So like, Mr. Keller and Mr. Walton were amazing at being able to just go through and just talk. I'll work on that. So, good evening, everyone here at the school committee. I want to, I appreciate the opportunity to be here with you and other district administrators to share Bryn Mawr's areas of focus for the upcoming school year. Ms. Carlson shared the initiatives for Pakachog School moments ago. And to ensure that Auburn's kindergarten, first and second graders have a positive and engaging experience, our focus areas align. So this year, we started our school year off with a theme of what we do matters. And I just want to thank everyone here for just going through and just, for everything that we do here and everyone in this room and anyone who might be watching and all of our district educators that are here. We know that what we do matters for all of Auburn's teachers and all of Auburn's teachers, all of Auburn students. So our first area of focus is to enhance writing with a structured Empowering Writers Curriculum, equipping students to become confident, proficient writers. Teaching primary age students to write and express themselves is a profoundly powerful and inspiring journey. At any age, children are brimming with curiosity and imagination and writing gives them a tangible way to bring their thoughts to life. In these early moments, when a child writes their first story, shares their feelings in words or in pictures, or proudly reads and shares their work aloud, that is when we witness the magic of self-expression taking root. Writing helps them find a voice. It instills confidence and unlocks the limitless, limitless potential in their creativity. It's more than just learning a skill, it's empowering them to see that their ideas matter, that their stories are unique and that their words have power to connect, inspire and to make a difference in the world. This year, our educators are participating in professional development to learn the Empowering Writers Program. This writing program enhances our ELA wonders program and the implementation fully next year will provide a stronger writing foundation for our primary students as they progress over to Swiss and Auburn Middle School and Auburn High School. Our second area of focus is to implement the new math program to boost achievement with differentiated support for diverse and underrepresented groups, including our English language learners and special education students. Mr. Keller and district educators have been working this year to explore new math curriculums that are curated that will strengthen the education of Auburn students from kindergarten all the way through grade eight. So implementing a new math program that's designed to boost achievement is a transformative step towards ensuring that every student thrives regardless of their background or learning needs. By offering differentiated support, we can create a learning environment where the diverse and underrepresented groups feel seen, feel valued and empowered. We recognize that every student learns differently and provides the tools to meet them where they are, fostering growth and confidence in their abilities. Watching students overcome challenges, discover their love for math and achieve success they once thought was impossible is really inspiring. It's a test, it's a testament to the power of equity-driven education. Provide, proving that with the right support, all students can reach their full potential. Our third area of focus is to promote social emotional learning through relationships, positive behavioral supports, restorative practices and wellness initiatives. This past summer, Bryn Mawr School had the privilege of training six educators in the Tier One restorative practices training that happened. And we look forward to training some other educators this upcoming summer. Restorative circles can create a safe space for students to connect, share and listen. This strengthens relationships between pairs. This strengthens relationships between peers and their teachers, fostering a sense of belonging and trust. We have found that these circles practices teach our children that voices matter, conflicts can be resolved with understanding, and that a strong community is built on respect and care. This lays the foundation for both personal growth and for thriving classroom culture. We continue to work with relationship mapping and PBIS to ensure that our students know how to be respectful, responsible, safe, and kind. Our counselor, Mrs. Moriarty, has conducted minute meetings with, which usually are a couple-minute meetings, with each student, and she's doing this three times a year to ensure that every student has an SEL check-in to help identify any Tier Two and Tier Three SEL needs through a personal connection. We remain committed to nurturing an environment where students and staff can flourish emotionally, physically, and academically. Our final area of focus is anchoring learning with curriculum utilizing Universal Design or UDL principles. This year, we've kind of taken a deep dive into the revised UDL rubric that was published in July of 2024. The latest iteration emphasizes cultivating learner agency, which is like the capacity for learners to kind of take ownership in their education by making choices, setting goals, you know, taking initiative through their learning process, that's here. So an increased focus on bias and equity and promoting inclusive practices. At Bryn Mawr, we focused on the multiple means of engagement strand, particularly how K-2 students access learning through nurturing play and sort of honoring their interests and identities. We know that play sparks curiosity, fosters growth, helps students, you know, in many different ways, you know? The engagement strand also emphasizes information about emotional capacity, where students develop empathy through restorative practices, and they learn how to repair harm, and this aligns with our SEL area of focus as well. We are prioritizing fostering a sense of belonging and community, making sure students feel loved and valued. In January, Bryn Mawr's UDL coaches and some students will be here to present to the school committee during their student spotlight to share how they implement UDL through ELA. So at this time, I'd like to share that there are no changes. I have no green or any colors on any of my line items. We will remain level funded. We are not requesting any new positions at Bryn Mawr at this budget. Are there any questions at this time?
Any questions?
I just have a comment. I like the what we do matters. That's good and bad, you know? It's good for the kids to recognize that every day, all day long, that what they do matters.
Absolutely. Yeah. Thank you all for your commitment to Auburn. I'm now going to turn it over to Dr. Susan Lopez, the principal of Swanson Intermediate School.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, everyone. Wonderful to see everybody again. Looking forward to sharing a few highlights from last year's budget and how it aligned to our strategic plan, and then share some of the highlights that I look forward to spearheading in the upcoming year. So under the teaching and learning, some of our highlights surrounded the full implementation of Universal Design for Learning in all content areas and in our specialist classrooms. You've heard over the years, this really allows our students to demonstrate their understanding in a way not only that is engaging, but it speaks to their learning styles and preferences. We've also successfully implemented the new Wonders Literacy Program. This has been a tremendous positive addition in the content that is very rich, it's diverse, and it's rigorous. It aligns beautifully with the learning rigor that the Auburn Public Schools holds for all of our students. It also provides differentiated activities and access to leveled texts and writing opportunities to ensure that all students are growing and learning grade-level standards. The expansion of project-based learning has been embedded not only in science and social studies, but in ELA as well. In all classrooms, these hands-on learning opportunities help students to make connections and contacts with the world around them. And finally, our use of iReady has been broadened not only to be used as a tool for diagnostic assessments and intervention, but also in a way to specifically address the skills meeting, specific practice in both ELA and math. Under the health, wellness, and safety umbrella, we've successfully been utilizing the concepts, skills, and strategies in our approach to restorative practices. This is seen more broadly in our morning meetings, conflict resolution practices, and restorative conversations. It's been a tremendous tool and approach. We're very grateful to have had this professional development and look forward to continuing its expansion. It truly centers around respect, dignity, and respect and dignity of another human being and how we interact with one another, even when emotions run high. We've also seen a number of safety procedures, presentations, and adjustments, not only throughout the district, but at Swanson specifically seen in assemblies through visitors from the Auburn Police Department, Auburn Fire Department, the District Attorney's Office, and other social organizations that support our community. Speaking of community, our community partnerships continue to expand as we seek ways to draw our children's awareness of how they can impact their school, their families, their community, and even people halfway around the world. We've tailored community projects and service learning projects that reinforce the importance of being grateful. There's always someone worse off, and as always, remembering the need to treat every human being with dignity, respect, and kindness. So moving forward into the upcoming year, there are five areas of focus that I'd like to speak to this evening. The first is to sustain and refine the implementation of Empowering Writers, and I can tell you, it's already having a tremendous impact on student engagement and success in developing a mindset and a love of writing, as well as the power of the written word. I'm looking forward to continuing the professional development surrounding this and fully implementing all components of the program in the years to come. I have no doubt our young writers will be blossoming into confident and articulate authors. Next, we're looking forward to fully implementing a new math program focusing on problem-solving skills and conceptual understanding, which we know is often difficult developmentally for our little ones. Following the program while still providing differentiated instruction in UDL strategies will continue to support and make accessible the grade-level math curriculum for all students. I know I spoke briefly about restorative practices and circles. We'll continue this philosophy and its practices through more opportunities with professional development. This common way of approaching conflict not only has positively impacted behavior and conflict resolution, but has made greater impact on effective communication between students through explicit modeling by teachers and meaningful, heartfelt, respectful conversations among students, staff, and administration. This has resulted in a stronger relationship just seen across the board. This past year, we've done a considerable amount of work with Landmark Outreach to support language and based, language-based practices across all curricular areas, not only to strengthen our special education practices, but to strengthen our practices in general. The last focus area that I'll speak to this evening is to continue to examine peer mentoring opportunities to promote solid relationships and genuine relationships, empathy and leadership among our students. Currently, we have multi-grade-level classroom peer buddies and unified mentors. We'll be seeking other opportunities where students can lead and model for peers the values, compassion, work ethic, and kindness that we want for our school, our community, our nation, and quite frankly, our world. As we move into a more budgetary aspect, everything you'll see in the budget this year is proposed as the same as last year. You'll see there are changes to one-line item, and that is on library supplies. The previous budget was $3,500. It's been decreased to $500. The reason for this is we have well-stocked classroom libraries and many resources where students have the opportunities to read diverse books in literature. Also, our library currently, though still full of books, which can be accessed if needed, has been transformed into a learning space for several teachers and groups of children. I'm also requesting one new position for the upcoming school year, which is a special education teacher. We've had an increase in the numbers of students in both our intensive special needs classroom, as well as throughout our school that require the expertise of an additional special education teacher. By adding this position, we'll be better able to serve our students with specific learning needs. Thank you for your consideration, and if there's anything I can answer, I'm happy to do so.
Questions?
No questions.
No?
What grade are you seeing an increase in special ed needs? Or is it like, is it grade-specific, or is it beginning across the grades?
I wouldn't say it's grade-specific. I think, I think it's across the board. I can't speak to that specifically if there's a grade level that I see specific. There's been a, there really isn't. We've had several move-in students as well, a number of move-ins, yeah, with significant needs, so. Thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry.
All right. Good evening. So I'm here to talk about the middle school. You're going to notice a lot of common themes. We're all working together to kind of really align everything we're doing K-12. So I'll just touch on briefly a couple of our curriculum items as far as UDL. We're continuing our work with that. Our coaches are being trained. They're very active. We're starting a book club, which actually I have the privilege of having an amazing assistant that I stole from Elmont Street School, and she brought some of the best ideas from Swanson Road, and then we're kind of incorporating them at our, at our level two. So we have a book club that we'll be running. It's going to allow the teachers to have meaningful discussions and kind of engage in talking about how we can, you know, reach our students and, you know, it's, it's kind of becoming infectious. A lot of people are ready. It's been a couple of years. It's, you know, it was tough for a little bit there, but people are really excited about kind of moving forward and, you know, kind of looking at the way we do things and, you know, changing it up to make it a little more relevant to the kids in this day and age. We're also working with Landmark. Again, they're meeting with our ELA department as well as special education. They're going to be working on Common Language, and we're going to be working, we're pretty much tying this in. We have Empowering Writers, which is going to be coming up next year. We're doing a bunch of work with that in our ELA department to get ready for that next year. All of that is going to be, basically, we'd be starting in the ELA department and kind of moving out towards our social studies, science, and then finally math, which is a little less writing-intensive, but we want common language throughout the building so that the students from grade six through grade eight, there's a common expectations, which is something that we've done, but it's kind of, we're kind of tuning it, fine-tuning it at this point. So it's really nice. You know, as far as that goes, as far as our safety, we continue to work on our Alice protocols, but this year, we've incorporated the Sandy Hook Promise, which is something we've so delighted to be involved in. I think we've been on a waiting list for a while for that. It's an anonymous reporting system. It is very powerful. I will tell you, we've had 12 tips, you know, and it goes for varying levels. There's, you know, Tier One, which is emergent, and Tier Two is something, we got to deal with it, but it's not like something that has to be dealt with like tonight. And then we have something that's kind of like, this is just good information to have so that our counselors can kind of check in with different students. It has been an amazing system. I have a great team. There's 10, all of our counselors signed on, and, you know, they're putting in time on the weekends and at night just to make sure that our kids are safe and feeling like they're part of something, which has kind of been the mission of the school this year is that we want everybody to feel like that they belong. So a lot of our initiatives and a lot of things we're doing are trying to make sure that, you know, it's hard enough for a lot of people just to wake up, but, and to come into work or to school, but we want it to be a place where, you know, it's not bad, right? Once you get there, it's great, you know, and you feel like. We all have that. I drive it every day, and I'm like, oh, man, but then I get there, I'm like, I'm so excited. But that's kind of where we want to be. You know, we're doing a bunch of things like that. I want all of the teachers this year building relationships, doing a lot of things with relationship mapping in our school improvement committees. You know, we have 84 staff members there and 627 students, and it really is not too much to ask for everybody to identify eight people, eight children that they can connect with. So that's something that we're doing and we're continuously working on. Let's see, we're bringing in community partnerships. We've had the DA in. We've had our first school-wide assembly in a very long time. It was yesterday. We battle-tested the gym, put 600 of them in the bleachers. It was amazing. Speaker came in to talk about kindness and compassion, kind of along with the anti-bullying. He was, he sent a great message to the students. Thought that was pretty awesome. We worked in partnership with Oxford. They actually brought it to our attention, and it was something nice. Our PTO, which is actually something, our ARC Junior, it started to come back up again, and they co-sponsored that. Actually, they didn't co-sponsor it, they sponsored it. So they, they had some money from years past, and they were able to pay for that. So that was really nice of them. Looking forward, we're doing some vertical alignment with the high school. We're going to be looking at doing some of that with Swanson as far as our practices. And we're, this spring, we're looking to bring back our Career Day, which is something that is, we'll probably be reaching out to all of you to be involved in that, but we're looking to do a school-wide thing. It's an initiative of our Guidance Department as well as our Unified Art Teachers. They are going to be putting that on for all of the students in the school, which is going to be, and a lot of community members. We really want as much community as possible, but then there's some, hopefully some surprise guests that may make an appearance. I don't know. People make promises, but we'll see. And our, and one of the other things we're doing along with that is our civics curriculum, our state, they're doing a state fair project in our eighth grade. So it's kind of like the Big E. They were inspired by the Big E. Basically, every, groups of students throughout the grade, they work on a cross-curricular project, and they identify a state, and then they bring in, they're going to have like an exposition at the end of the year. So that's something that we'll be inviting people into. And then my vision for the future in seventh grade is because it follows like the world history, we'll have like some sort of international fair as well, which would be kind of cool to wrap in different cultures, not just the states. And I think that's it. I think I've talked enough. So are there any questions from you?
Through the chair, if I can just say, my daughter came home yesterday. The assembly was yesterday, right?
It was yesterday.
The days blend. And she never gets excited to tell me anything, and she really enjoyed that assembly.
She, he was amazing. His name's Ed Garrity. He's been around for like 30 years. He used to run the student council circuit down at the Cape, and he, he's really cool. And I think that all the students, the eighth grade and sixth grade, they loved being in the same room together. And actually, it kind of inspired me to think about towards the summer, like working with the fifth grader coming up. He was talking about one of the coolest things was when he would walk through the halls and everybody walks their heads down, but the eighth graders would say hi to him when he was in sixth grade, and it was just the coolest thing in the world. I said, you know, why can't we do that? So maybe this, this summer, we've been looking to have some sort of student-led orientation is what we're working on with the Guidance Department now.
Great idea.
And yeah, it's kind of like a college one, except with all the partying, but. You know, the one everybody goes to in August, but everybody comes in, we do some sort of activities like scavenger hunts, but kind of build a relationship in small groups with some of the seventh graders. So going into eighth grade, so other than that.
Yeah, just a comment from myself. The, the relationship mapping, seeing it in action, that's just amazing. You know, everyone has eight kids, seems very doable.
It is. Custodians, everybody's on board. We have custodians, the Joseph guys are great. Secretaries, custodians, ABAs, IAs, nurses, everybody, they're all, they're all in. So, you know, it's, we all want to feel like we belong, you know?
Yep, especially middle school. It's so hard. It's a hard time.
I hated it, and I wouldn't go back for all the money in the world. Although I say that now, but. I guess if you had all the money, it might be different. So other than that, I think, any more questions?
Yeah, just that Sandy Hook seems like it's giving kids a voice, you know? Anonymous.
It's fantastic.
Really empowering.
Yeah.
It's, it's, you know, and like I was, we were talking about, we had a meeting today with them, kind of a check-in of the Sandy Hook people. You know, a lot of it is, we kind of are on top of it, but giving the students a voice and knowing that they're heard, even though if it's anonymous, we can respond to them through the iPads and through our online system. So it's, you know, a lot of times I think people don't think that things happen, you know, but now we have a chance to kind of let them know everything's, we're on it, you know?
Yeah, it's amazing.
Through the chair, having 10 staff members, was it 10 that signed up?
Including myself and Ms. Clough.
Yeah, that's amazing.
Wow, yeah. Nights and weekends.
Workers.
How they care about the kids.
Yeah, thank them for us. That's just, that's amazing.
We have an amazing, we have an amazing team, as do all the other schools, but I, I put my money on them every day. So without them, we, I mean, it would just, I'd just be a guy standing there, but like, they, they make everything look great, trust me.
You do have a great group.
I don't know. Ms. Bailey.
I'm Ms. Bailey.
Ms. Bailey. I'm the principal of the high school.
Thank you, Matt.
You guys did your hair the same tonight.
Okay, let me find my Ms. Bailey.
Because they have older students.
I, I just wanna start with, I, I know Joe can't see me, but I see Joe, I just wanna say thank you, Joe. Truly fabric that makes Auburn great, so thank you for everything that you do. It's tough just seeing your eyes right now, it's kinda eerie, but I always have one last request, if you could get some air conditioning in this room for this poor guy, I can't hide anything. Anyways, okay, so Fine Arts. And as somebody that just took part in the last play, I can just, I can't begin to tell you how hard it is and how much respect I have for the amount of effort, preparation, time that those kids put in. They are, they were just, it was amazing actually. But I had the fortunate pleasure of being around our band multiple times, our chorus, as well as being at both shows. And so I got a chance to see at least the high school version of our Fine Arts program as well as our art teacher who is just truly amazing. So with that being said, as far as looking forward and looking at our focus and expectations, we are always, and I think I've told you this before, we are always looking at trying to find ways to kinda hook kids. Our arts are one way to take a look at what's happening in today's day from a current event standpoint and trying to mirror activities, mirror courses that are kind of aligned with what kids might be interested in. So we're always trying to be creative. Ms. Bailey does a wonderful job with, with sharing different ideas, some things I'm not, I'm not even aware of, whether it's like, and some things that's simple, like a garage band where the kids are actually performing their own music and we're putting four or five kids who have different backgrounds and interests into a band where they develop a project, which I think is pretty awesome. Don't mind, they actually sound good too at the same time. We, we are trying to increase our student retention in our enrollment and making sure that we grow our band and courses. I think as we've talked about in the past as well, COVID, that was that one time, this is that one area that it really kinda slowed us down a little bit because it was awful hard to get together in groups. Now, we tried and we did a lot of great things, but I think now it's almost like this Renaissance time period where we got a lot of, there's a lot of interest. I just happened to be at our middle school and high school concert, the chorus concert the other night and to have sixth through 12th grade all on the stage together, I don't know if anybody got a chance to see that, but it was truly fantastic.
I didn't make it, but I heard great things about it.
Videos on Facebook.
Yeah, it was just a wonderful evening.
They were great.
And we're, we're seeing the signs of, of some of the growth within the programs, so, and the kids are truly excited too as well. So that's really good to report and we want to see even more growth. We are trying to look at, well, this, actually, we're working on something now where we have a Auburn High School chorus, a unified class for music, where they're working with our students in the Rise and Evolve classroom, so it's roughly a group of like 20. And it's at our building block stages now, we're trying a lot of things. Ms. Bailey is super excited as well as the student helpers in the room and we're seeing good things and we're gonna try to further develop that program for our kids. Next year, well, we're in the process of this year working on coming up with a new elective called Pop Choir, just to expand some of our offerings. And that came from both our new music teacher as well as some of the students who I think had some experiences at previous locations and thought that that might be a good thing to add to our program. So stay tuned and hopefully maybe next year I can even maybe get a sampling of what that course looks like. And then the last thing is just to increase the opportunities for students to use technology to create, express and engage in all of the music styles. So again, that's kind of a, something that's a work in progress. As far as changes, there's one change and I think it just reflects the changes in transportation costs because our band chorus travels to many, many competitions throughout the year. So when we can use Rocket One for our smallest groups, we do, but at times when we're moving a band, it takes a bus, so you see that $3,000 increase, but there's. Oh, oh, I'm sorry, yes, and that's not in the school committee packet, I'm sorry.
That's all right.
Any questions?
Yeah, were you, did you play a role in this play? Like, were you a character in this play?
I'm embarrassed to say I did. I played, I played the principal role in Footloose.
Fitting, oh.
Oh, neat.
Real stretch. So he didn't, he, the, the acting was, it was just language I would never use, so it was so hard to kinda think like a different person.
Yeah.
And then I'm like, gosh, I have, I'm worrying about like six sets of lines when these kids have pages and pages and, oh my gosh, it's just unreal what they have to learn and I was nervous about six lines. But anyways, it was a great experience, I won't do it again, but great. Any questions?
No.
No, okay. Okay, athletics. So with this right here, we are continuing to see great growth, we, and I should've started off the programming by saying, it's amazing that we just finished the first trimester. And with the first trimester, that was with our fall sports programs. So we probably had a little over 300, in between 300 to 340-ish students participating in our fall sports programs, which is just, we have 735 kids roughly, so that's pretty awesome that we have that many kids participating in our athletic teams. With that being said, as far as our areas of growth and expertise, we want to continue to develop student leadership. We want to send our kids off to other, these other schools and to represent us the best possible way. I've always looked at them as diplomats, they get on a bus, they're gonna go travel, they represent us, they represent everything that's, that is us. So we wanna make sure that they have the skill sets to be able to do that. So one particular area is leadership and giving them leadership opportunities. Mrs. Tatum began doing some of this work at the end of last year and Mr. Field is embracing that work and adding to it. So I'm hoping to see, I, I don't think you should need a captain's band to be a leader in a team. And leaders can come from different backgrounds, different walks of life, it can be a freshman on a team, it could be a senior on a team, especially with how kids mature these days, so I'm excited to see where that goes. Increase the community partnerships, investigate community service opportunities. We want to, in the past, I think maybe eight, 10 years ago, we did these meet the coach nights where families could come into the school to meet the adults who are spending all this time. I mean, our coaches are so influential to our kids, I think it's important that we have that face to face, so we're trying to figure out how to incorporate that as well as trying to come up with community activities. Something that we've been back and forth with, and this is Mr. Field and I, has been trying to figure out some community service acts for our teams to participate in so they can give back. We have so many people that come back to the community to come, to come watch, maybe they were a former athlete, maybe they just like sports, maybe they just like being around a school. And I think it's, it'd be a great thing for us and our, and our students in having that many of them give back, even if it's for a couple hours on an afternoon. So we're going to try to develop some opportunities for kids there and then increase the professional development opportunities for our coaching staff. I think sports have changed, it's evolved, you have to be, the expertise level that you have to have to be able to work with our kids now, with the amount of training that our kids come in with is such at a high level that you, you constantly, just like with our teaching, you have to keep updating, you have to keep learning the latest practices. So the MIA has a lot of activities out there, then there's a lot of other outside agencies that support our coaching staff. So that is our, those are our initiatives. As far as the changes, we do have some changes from an athletic sense, I'm sorry. We, I think you'll see that athletic transportation, again, just like music, with the increase of busing. Now, I will say this, we haven't added any new trips, okay? So our teams and the amount of away games that we have are the amount of away games we've always had, it's just the fact that we're trying to figure out, you know, and after Miss Stan it comes up with her numbers, it'll give us a better handle on just where we're at. But I, I feel like we're gonna be roughly in that same kind of area as far as trips go. Coaches, professional development, you'll see there's a $500 increase. A typical training might run between $300 and $500 for a coach to spend three to four hours, so that's not a, that's not a lot of money, but as we start the pilot things, we're gonna actually try to use our internal staff members too. We do have some veteran members of our coaching team that can help some of our younger coaches or our less experienced coaches, and I, I think we can kinda pull from what's already made us good to kinda help, so. And when we can, I think we can send them out to other places. Uniforms, so in the past, we've been pulling our uniforms from our equipment lines. So our equipment line item in the past has covered both our fall, spring, our fall, winter and spring. And as you know, everything has gone up, so it's awful hard to, if a soccer ball was $20 two years ago, it might be $40 now. And a basketball might be $110, believe it or not, for a game basketball. And so we were, to pull uniforms, a set of uniforms for boys and girls might cost anywhere from $10,000 to $12,000 for one set of like home and away uniforms for say 25 kids. So separating that and having its own line area helps us be able to continue to take a look at our uniform distribution list and make sure we're continually updating, so uniforms are, so kids, every, every five, six, seven years, there's a new set of uniforms, just the amount of wear and tear that they take. And really, I'll be honest with you, I think sometimes the quality isn't what it was once before, so they do break down. So that's what you see there. Huddle, this is our, so this is our video processing, so we film, where we film the games and then the coaches are able to, that film can get broken down by this group, which will actually provide notes, trends, coaching tips, which our coaches use to help coach our kids. So that's what you see there and that is throughout our varsity program right now, our varsity programs. So our soccer teams use it, our basketball teams, our football team, some of the, those are some of the major teams that use them, but I believe there are more teams than that. Yes, and yes, Mr. Ugo in town, they've come up with some monies to help support us in that particular lineup to this point this year. Arbiter, and I think Jen mentioned arbiter before because that is our scheduling system as well as a payment system, so we can get out our checks to our referees in kind of a quick way. So that kinda helps because the amount of paperwork that they might have on their end is, is a lot to begin with and if this can minimize things a bit, so anyways, good thing. And then just overall the dues, our league dues, the MIA dues, they've just gone up. So you see an increase where it was $8,000 this year, it's, it's gonna go up to close to $12,000, so that's why you see the jump into $4,000. Any questions from an athletic standpoint?
Through the chair, did they change, did we change from Swickle?
Oh, we're still in the process.
Okay.
It's looking like it's all gonna change, I, I believe there's over 30 schools that have committed, so I do think it's gonna take place.
Okay.
We just sent a letter saying that we would, but we haven't got anything back as far as alignments yet.
With that rollout in the fall?
Oh, it's that in the fall, yeah. And my hope is, and, and I do believe it's gonna, it's not gonna hurt our transportation costs because we really, when you look at the teams around us, we really are essential. So, but there are some places, some schools that are kind of on the outskirts that it's not gonna be as helpful for, for those schools, but I think we'll be okay. Okay. You know, this is a lot of me, I'm sorry. Okay, so going back to this right here, I had somebody in my old world that talked about it's all for the, all for the children and he must've said that three, four times a week anytime we saw him. And I believe that when you take a look at this, I could've wrote two pages of slides, I really tried to condense knowing that you'd hear so much and I'm usually the last one to speak. So the first piece is just updating our curriculum and instructional methods to reflect, to reflect UDL. Throughout the year, we've been working with our coach Karen Fedella, who's done an amazing job breaking down UDL practices for our teachers in small bites through our professional development, through our faculty meetings and anything that we can do to meet the needs of all of our students. And truly, UDL helps meet the needs of all of them. At the same time, knowing that our landscape has changed, our population has changed and to be as culturally responsible as, as possible as well. So those two kinda guide a lot of what you see underneath even. Number two was partnering with our peer leaders, our Students for Diversity Group and other outside organizations to promote culturally responsive practices. And, you know, we, we did a great, we had a great workshop this past fall, we're following something up in January where we have somebody coming in to speak to us more, to speak to our teaching staff about microaggressions and just some of the challenges. It's actually an English teacher from a Boston area school that's gonna come in, that's just a wonderful speaker who I think can provide some tips just with the challenges that we all face in our classrooms with even managing a challenging conversation amongst kids. So I'm super excited about that and we are taking our time with this to make sure that it sticks and that it's meaningful both for our, for our faculty as well as for our students. Utilizing our communities, our community time, last year we met in communities twice a month, this year we're meeting every week. And I could tell you that we could use a couple extra days with the amount of work that we have and the amount of activities that we have, both from a social emotional standpoint, from a connection standpoint, as, as some of my peers mentioned, relationships, 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 they couldn't be more important today. I feel like the, the quicker we can find connection from with our student and some adults in the building, the better the experience for the kid. And, and I, I'll say this, better experience for the, for the, for the adult too. So we have great kids and, and sometimes it's just like putting a little bit of time and effort into discovering a little bit more about somebody, you're like, wow, you know, you have some things in common where you can, and, and, and that, that holds. And that's something that lasts and that really helps when you're having a good day and when you're having a bad day. So using that time period during our communities to not only improve our culture in the school, but to continue to work on how to, it's all those hard skills, right? Like how to, how to be able to respond to conflict in a civil manner and, and where, you know, you're not shouting off on social media chats or having to raise your hands up like this, you know, and, and unfortunately, that's the world we live in and so we need to do some of that hard work. So I'm super excited about the work that's happening there. I, I think the second half of the year or the next two thirds of the year are gonna be equally important and powerful as far as the lessons that we have planned for the kids. The next piece, as Matt mentioned, I think it's incredibly important, the partnership we have with the middle school as far as transition. Matt's been great to work with as well as Greg was previously and we look forward to working with the middle school team to make sure that the transition with the kids is as smooth as possible. And then lastly, again, and this is a little redundant, creation of opportunities for, so our, our peer leadership group, I don't, I can't call them an ADL group anymore, but our peer leadership group, trying to find ways for them to not only work within our school community, but be able to work outside in the community too as well. You know, Auburn's a pretty awesome place and there's so much around us where we could get our kids involved in, it's just trying to find and pick our places and making sure our kids are ready to be able to respond in a positive manner out in the community. So those are areas of focus for this upcoming next, I don't know, 12 to 15 months. And as far as changes to line items, I've got one, I got two greens. An audiovisual line went from 13, 16 to 744 and that's just more reflective of just our general costs and spending in that particular area and where we're at right now. Wood tech went up and, I mean, that's pretty, I mean, just the price of lumber costs and materials and we're filling those classes. We have two or three different people, Bill Wright and his team do a fantastic job with our wood shop one, two and three classes and we, we put 18, that's about, that's the maximum that we can have. So 18 times five blocks a day times three trimesters, that's a lot of wood, okay? So, so that's why you see the increase there. And then curriculum competitions, we were able to, you see a $3,000 change in the positive, so. Any questions?
Is that because you're not entering competitions or just?
I think that's more reflective of just how many we're going to, I don't, we're not, we haven't reduced, if something came up, we've always found support with administration to be able to get our kids to something.
The robotics club, they went last year, right, somewhere?
Yes, yes, but, and so for example, robotics club isn't going anywhere this year.
Okay.
But we're not, the kids aren't losing out on anything.
Okay, alright, good.
And the teachers are quick to remind me, so. No issues with that. Any other questions? Thank you, I'm sorry I have so long.
No, you're good, thank you.
Good, thank you.
So before I go on, I just wanna say, I think it's been a long time since I've sat and smiled at work for an hour and a half. But it's just really, I, I think this is something we have to remind our teachers about too and I, I have to do better at reminding you about the hard work you do and how much it matters and when you sit and hear it in a comprehensive way like that, it's just, it's just, it just makes me proud and happy for our kids that they can have that experience. So thank you to everybody, that was really just great to hear all of that. So we are finally at our final thoughts, tonight we're presenting a draft budget of It reflects an increase of $1,795,994 over last year's budget. We've used in projected offsets $3,657,998 and this equates to a 5.7% increase over the FY '25 appropriated budget. And I promise you, it's not lost on any of us, the amount of that increase and what that can mean. So I stress to you that it's a draft and I go back to the variables I talked about earlier that may impact over this, over the coming, the. the coming months before we even get to select board or finance. Uh, there may be things that changed. As I said earlier, two weeks ago, there was not going to be any more funding for newly arrived students. And yesterday, well, that changed. And so all of that will impact this, but again, we've done our best to put this together in a way that makes sense. So we've worked to keep our positions, you know, reflect the appropriate increases so that we don't leave anything short. We've used our offsets, maximized our use of grants. Um, we wait to hear about chapter 70. So what will happen is now we'll have another meeting in two weeks. So at that time, once you have some time to think about tonight, again, look at the budget. You might have another, you'll have another chance for any questions or thoughts. Or honestly, I may come to you with changes over the next two weeks because seemingly things are changing from day to day. Um, so we'll see what happens at the next meeting and then after that, it will be all of a sudden, 2025. Uh, and we do have to vote a budget forward to the town. So again, it is a draft budget, so even once it's voted to the town, if there were something that were to change after that, I may come back to you and say, we need to revisit this one more time and send a new draft forward. So time will tell. Um, but I want to end tonight, uh, with the quote, uh, "History will judge us by the difference we make in the everyday lives of children." I've used this quote before, so it's not lost on me that it's a repeat. Um, but I just don't want to forget that, that this is the work and this is what our work does. And this is what this money serves, serves, right? It serves children, it isn't just a dollar sign. Um, and so what we should be thankful for is certainly all of you, certainly the greater Auburn community with the support that they've given us. Um, but I promise you that we have tried to be as respectful as we can in coming to this number. And the number is the number, as you saw, there's, there's no fluff in this budget. There's not a lot of extra, there aren't big new things. Um, the town graciously worked with us around monies for that new math program. Uh, because previously, if you would recall, that would be included in a budget. Um, and even back, I can remember back probably 10 years ago, they were $225,000. Well, now they're $380,000. So to put just that amount into a budget would be tremendous. So we appreciate the town working with us around that. So, um, we're doing the best we can, uh, we got to keep the ship rolling. So I thank you for all your support, uh, and if you have any final questions, I'd be happy to take them.
Through the chair, did we pick a math curriculum yet or are we still in the?
They are down to two. Uh, Mr. Keller's been leading a committee with K to eight teachers. Um, they're doing some observation in some other districts to go and see some of the programs, uh, but hoping in short time they can come to a decision so that some of our March PD data time can be used, uh, to prepare for that.
Cool, thank you.
Any more questions from?
No, I just have a few comments. Um, these presentations were thoughtful and just great. Like I had goosebumps through some of them, it was just, you guys did a really great job. Um, you can't put a price on some of this stuff, you know? So town's always been very supportive, we're thankful, uh, we are here to represent the taxpayers. Uh, but this is money well spent, I mean, this is just a no brainer in my opinion anyway. Um, and you said, you know, the rowing in the same direction. I think the consistency, I see it tonight where it's like the restorative circles are starting in the part, in the lower grades and they're continuing through Swiss and, you know, then, and then the middle school is working with the high school to streamline things. So, I mean, that's rowing in the same direction right there. Like it's just, our strategic plan is rolling out, it's, it's great, it's great to see. Um, and yeah, that's all I have for notes, but great job, everybody, I'm really happy, so.
Nice.
Thank you.
So thank you very much. So again, there'll be more time to continue this.
Yep.
This conversation.
We'll beat this to death.
You will beat it to death. So, um, just before, I do want to take one moment again to thank all of you. And just to take a moment, he will be back in January, but I'd like to introduce Glenn Gregg while Glenn, if you'd stand up. Um, and just, he'll be back, uh, but Glenn will take over for Mr. Finney. So once Joe leaves, so he is here, they're working together. Um, I toured a school today with Glenn and, um, Joe has taken him to meet some of the staff and show him, you know, boilers and those things and. Um, so he'll be back for a formal kind of meet and greet in January, but I just wanted to acknowledge and.
Does he know about the mice and the ghosts downstairs? Uh, yeah, you're fine.
Alright, so I think we can let these folks head home.
Yeah, please do, yes.
Thank you, everybody, thank you. Appreciate it, nicely done. Nicely done.
Yeah, thank you very.
And when I should stop sharing?
Night, night.
Thank you, good night, thanks Brooke.
Thank you, Brooke.
Oh, awesome, oh, that's so.
Thank you, yes.
Alright, great.
That's amazing.
Yeah.
They do a great job.
The comfy chairs over here.
Good night, thank you. Thank you, y'all. Good night, bye Matt, thank you very much. Thanks, everyone, bye. Bye, have a good night.
Awesome, great, Walton just showed me this.
Oh. Nice.
Black they got, so.
Oh, beautiful.
Yep, really nice.
Yeah, it's, that's an amazing accomplishment to be a district.
Yeah, the whole district.
Yeah, that's awesome. Alright, on to a few more things. Uh, the student privacy policies, we are here for the third read and potentially a vote by you to accept the policies. We didn't make the changes that were discussed at the last, um, at the last meeting. So I don't know if there are any further questions related to those policies.
Nope.
No, no. Seeing, I think we're ready to. Be done with that, so. Um, all right, entertain a motion to.
I didn't put in the motion, sorry about that.
It's alright. I'll make a motion.
Make a motion.
Go ahead, you have it.
I have it.
You got it.
Okay. I'll make a motion to approve policy IJND, access to digital resources, policy IJMDG, student data privacy policy, and policy IJM, written information security policy.
I'll second. All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Excellent, thank you. Uh, we are on the second reading of updated policy EFD for the meal charge and refund for a second read. I didn't know if there were any questions.
Any questions for anyone?
We'll come back one more time. Uh, also in your packet under new business, this is really just for your review, is the FY '25, uh, Southern West County Educational Collaborative First Quarter Report as we are mandated to, uh, present throughout the course of the year. And I read through it every year, they just do amazing stuff. Yeah, they really. Arnold Lundwall and his team, uh, since he's taken over, they've done a tremendous job. Great, yep, yep. Okay. No teaching and learning. No teaching and learning.
No, Mr. Keller's off the hook.
Alright, we'll turn it over to you, Ms. Finnick.
My turn, I have provided you a year-to-date budget report for the FY '25 school year dated November 25th, 2024 for your review. And I've provided a listing of budget transfers dated November 25th, 2024 between the same series and different series for which I am seeking your approval. Any questions for Ms. Finnick? No. I seek a motion to approve those transfers.
I'll make a motion to approve the list of transfers dated November 25th, 2020, 2024 as presented by the business manager.
Second. Hey, all those in favor?
Aye.
Thank you. And I have provided with you an updated document for facility rental rates for which I am seeking your approval. And just to give you a little background on that, in my new role, I have seen firsthand the need for more accurate and efficient scheduling and billing for the usage of our indoor and outdoor facilities. Additionally, the heavy usage cost of maintenance and staffing to maintain the standard that our community has been accustomed to comes at a price. Um, we have excellent facilities and know and appreciate the support we receive from our Auburn community and the Pappas Trust. We are blessed. Um, as I mentioned earlier this evening, we are working with FMX to streamline our facilities rentals. Therefore, we have reviewed our fee schedule in preparation for that. We've added a deposit and cancellation fee, which are pretty standard practices when renting any facility. Um, previously, you will note that Group B was not charged for usage. However, the costs are falling on our district from their usage, which ultimately should not be as these are not the school-sponsored organizations. Um, as you know, these organization, organizations do charge fees and obtain sponsors, seemingly making it possible for them to support the cost of their usage of our facilities. As always, we want to continue our positive relationship with our community partners and will support them with our transition to our new system. Um, and I'm happy to answer any questions you may have.
Through the chair, I do have a couple of questions because Auburn Youth did reach out to me. Um, have they been, so I guess their concern, if I get it correctly, it was late at night. Um, was they weren't aware of the increase? So now this, the kids who are playing like right now, they're probably going to be in the red because of the increase in costs of rental. So is, like, were they told beforehand or is that something?
It wasn't shared with our members because it needs to come to you first.
Yeah, so I didn't.
To come to you first.
I don't know from a budget.
Youth who?
Basketball.
So I think what you're saying that it could be that we may need to delay the roll-in of this so that they can accommodate into their fees.
If we can handle that in the, or, you know, like, I know, um, in baseball at least, we do a good job of, um, fundraising. You know, we have sponsors and all that and that way maybe they can get that rolling.
Yep.
If we can delay, if possible.
Yep, yep. But I think. It's, it's in some of the things because it's an online system, they're getting ready to put those things in and those things into place. We can delay that, um, we could discuss it, but.
Yeah, I just don't.
It is certainly, that is something that, you know, they weren't getting any fees. And the district is paying for that, which is our tax.
Paying for it, right.
No, you heard tonight, right, that, um, just the track replacement.
Alone.
Was over a quarter of a million dollars. Um, and the usage, the, the other piece of this is, is the actual managing of the usage. Right now, so we did set and set up a Google form that they've been using. But what happens is, is that, um, they won't know what the dates are that they're going to need.
Right, right.
So they book every possible date they can book. And then what happens is they don't tell us that they don't need it for half of them.
Right.
And so now we've denied other places. And it's, what this system, FMX is going to allow people to do is, we're going to be able to put in what's available. And then the system is going to say, yes, you can have this. We're going to put some limits on the number of sessions groups can book so that they can't book 40 sessions when they only need 20.
Yep.
Um, and some things, some things like that.
And having them have to pay, had it up head, we'll stop that too probably, hopefully.
Correct.
Right, and we're going to request a 50% deposit and then they'll get right away.
Yeah.
Instead of what's happening, um, and the practice has been we're billing them after events have happened. Or they cancel and we have a site manager, that we have to pay the site manager, but then they, they, they're not there. So, you know, we, as you know, um, during my internship last year, looking at local area facilities and things that have facilities that are like ours to ensure that we're in line with what's going on and to be able to sustain, you know, the maintenance and, and all of that. We want the community in here, absolutely, and we are blessed with the Pappas Trust for things that happen, um, at the high school and whatnot. But also, you know, if, if fees are charged to the people that are coming in to use them.
Right.
We should be able to utilize some of that to support our facilities.
And most school districts do do this.
Yes.
Yeah, okay.
Yes.
Yeah, I mean, my only thought would be if we could delay at least for the seasons that are current. I don't know about soccer, I don't.
It's basketball right now, I think.
Yeah, I don't know if soccer registration for the, for the spring has opened up yet.
I think it has actually, I think it's been in my notice. To go out, I think we sent it out already. I think that's a completely reasonable request to give them a heads up. I think for part of this is particularly for Group C and D that we can get this set up for them.
Yeah.
Right?
Absolutely.
So even if we went that route initially and then added the next level on, I think that's a reasonable request so that they can factor that into the fees that they, um, whatever they charge for the, for the kids to play.
Fundraising.
Yeah, through the chair, I did know, I did remember when we saw this, I think it was like two years ago.
Yep.
Um, a couple of people approached me and were angry about it. And I brought that concept of like, you're using the school facilities. And I see both sides, as a parent, like I don't want to pay more in registration fees for the numerous sports my children want to play. But at the same time, and I had a couple of people approach me and I said, you know, you're using the facilities and you're, like you're walking in in the winter and you are walking into the school and you're wearing winter boots on the basketball court, like then, I was like, do you know how much it costs to redo a basketball court? They're like, no, I'm like, look into it, it's a lot of money. So I agree that, but I do, I also do agree with Megan, maybe we say that, you know, June 1st it starts. So we give, you know, the current soccer registration, we give softball, we give soccer, we give basketball a chance and then we get those and then we say, okay, from this point forward now. I would say a June 1st start for, you know, well, Group, Group A, it doesn't matter, but for Group B. We give them a chance to be like, hey, listen, this is coming down the pipeline, we need to do this for wear and tear.
Yeah.
Every other school in the area does it.
And I will tell you too, I have heard, because I met with several of the coaches, um, last spring. Um, you know, that we're taxpayers in this town and we should be able to use it.
Yeah.
And, and I, I agree with that and we want our community to use it. But what their tax is, we don't have a line item.
Right.
For maintenance.
Yeah.
For outside usage.
Yeah.
We don't have that line item, right? You just saw our budget, everything's accounted for. That isn't, there isn't that extra part of money to make sure that we can pay for people to be there to supervise these organizations that are coming in. Um, and for any additional setup that might ask to have to happen or whatever it is, you know? And the wear and tear on the floor, which, you know, I, Greg, uh, Glenn and I walked the middle school and the middle school's floor has historically, they have to do some special things there because it gets slippery.
Yeah.
Right, because of the wear that it gets, it can get slippery. Um, so, um, nobody's looking at this to try and make, honestly, make any money. We're looking at it to make sure that we can maintain facilities, which, you know, we have amazing facilities across the board. But a lot of use and we get a lot of use.
A lot of use, yeah.
And what this system will do too is when people put in the time that they want, it's going to automatically generate.
The fee.
An estimated fee for them, for the number, so they're going to get it right away. So now.
The human right out of it.
Yeah.
A computer.
The Google form, because our Google form can't do that. So they put it in and then Kara or Denise at the high school, if it's at the high school, they have to go through and say, okay, it's this many days, this is what we would charge, this is what's available. It really is heavily, um, labor intensive.
Yeah.
Right now.
Through the chair, this is still pretty cheap.
Yeah.
Comparatively to.
And actually, some of our prices were cheaper than some of the others. That, you know, we didn't feel that it was fair to increase crazy things. And we tried to be pretty consistent about the size of the space and where the space was and the turf fields versus non-turf fields. Um, and that actually, um, my administrative assistant and I met with and did a walk of the facilities and fields and whatnot, um, with Kurt Field, our athletic director, so that we can also put in there, you know, what are they, what are the fields lined for that are official that people can rent them for and everything, so that we have all of the right information. I would just ask, because Group B does currently pay for site managers. Um, so I would ask that we, um, keep that in place. And maybe just the building rental piece, I would also like to keep the cancellation fee for others as well. Uh, you know, that's three days in the event, because what will happen is if they cancel the event after the high school has let out, there's no secretary to get the information to then cancel a site manager. I have to by law pay somebody for three hours if they come to work. So, um, I would just ask that you would consider, um, that at this time. And potentially the deposit of what they would have with the, that. You know, the rent, the building rental price, uh, you know, but I think that's totally reasonable. You know, we needed to discuss it first before I put it out to the, to the community. So, um, I would just ask if we could approve that, those pieces to it.
Absolutely.
Yeah, we'll kind of do like a staggered approach, I guess. So approve those, you know, very much needed things. Can I also see, and you can just email it to me on the side or whatever, what the current rates are and how much to show how much they're going up, just so I can see.
Oh, that's, we should, we should have thought of that.
And through the chair, I think a lot of things we don't pay attention to is that the public comes in and they don't always follow the rules. So they could do unnecessary damage to the facilities and not, and not, like, and they might not have any, like, like they're not, may, may not be an Auburn person. Saw someone drinking a coffee the other day in the gym, I'm like, you can't drink a coffee.
Yeah. We've limited some folks, like we've had some issues with places, particularly.
We've limited some folks, like we've had some issues with places, particularly some dance recitals.
Oh, really?
Yeah.
We have a nice auditorium, so yeah.
We have a beautiful auditorium, but you know what a dance recital is backstage?
That's true.
Right? With all the room that they need for, you know, costume changes and makeup and all of that. And so the last one that came by, we said no, because the cleanup for the custodian was so extensive. There was no damage, but it was just a mess. You know, so we just said no, even though we can make money on those, you know, that can go into this fund. But then we had another, it was a taekwondo that came in and it went great. And, you know, we made some money because they were an outside organization. So it's finding that balance and what works.
There's much makeup and taekwondo.
Yeah.
Maybe some blood.
And you know, as for the taxpayers saying, you know, we deserve to use these facilities and whatnot. The track, all the damage to the track was the strollers, was the community, you know, using it on Sundays and whenever it was open, just using it. And we appreciate it. That's great, but that is exactly why we have to have these fees, you know, so.
Yeah.
It's gotta come from somewhere. Like, yeah, just can't pay for it. So.
And through the chair, they can always ask the select board if they want to make a line item for it outside the schools.
Now you're gonna get us in trouble.
Happy, they're gonna call me.
You need a diaper. I need a diaper.
Alright, so how are we gonna word?
I have something written if you want to.
Okay.
To prove the updated document for facility rental dated November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four as presented by the business manager with Group B. Building rental starting June first, but cancellation fee and site manager fee starting immediately.
June first, will that get us through soccer? I don't know how long soccer goes.
So maybe, yeah.
I don't know. My, my kids are not soccer inclined.
I would maybe suggest July first. That's our new fiscal year.
Fine.
Okay.
Oh, that's a great idea.
July first. So it would be. To approve the updated document for facility rental rates dated November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four as presented by the business manager with Group B building. Rental starting July first, but cancellation fees and site manager fees starting immediately.
Can you give that to Mandy if she has it?
Nice job, Sam. Thanks.
Yeah, it's really good.
And I love the cancellation fee. I'm sorry, but if they're booking.
Did you also want to add?
Oh, the deposit.
Deposit?
Yes, actually, if, if you don't mind, because we're hoping to roll this out, the FMX for January. So.
Yes, if you could add that.
Yep, so.
And. Yeah, what else do you want?
What do you want?
A, Group C, Group D, starting. Immediately and with Group B. Building rental starting July first. But cancellation fee, site manager fee and deposit.
Right. And on the back, is any of the add-ons? And those, the most part haven't changed.
I did check with Mr. Fahy if he thought we should go up on the outdoor lighting, but he thought that that was still appropriate.
Right.
And where does PTO junior arc and all, and do they fall under the public schools like Group A?
I don't believe, I don't know, actually.
That's an interesting question.
So what are you, you're thinking like spooky spectacular?
Yeah, I don't think they should have to pay.
Yeah, I don't know if we, I don't think we.
All their money goes back to.
I know. I don't think we've ever charged them for that.
No, and I don't think that they.
The other thing is, is that those likes, if we just think of that one, like Dr. Lopez is there. So I don't even know that we have a site manager. We have a custodian on board, right? But we have second shift custodians anyway, so that's not an additional custodian. So I don't think things like that.
I'm not sure that they've even filled out like the building rental.
Yeah, alright. That all goes typically through the principal. Yeah.
Okay.
We would not because all of their fundraising comes.
Exactly.
Impacts our students.
Yeah.
Okay, good.
Alright, so let's get that motion going.
Do you want to say it one more time, Sam?
Yep. And just so you know, it's present, I put the date of twelve four on there. I keep doing that with my dates and I apologize. I put the meeting date on there instead. So it's dated twelve four.
Okay, so I'll make a motion to approve the updated document for facility rental dates, rates dated November twenty-fifth, twenty twenty-four as presented by the business manager. With Group A, C and D starting immediately and with Group B building rentals starting July first. With the exception of cancellation fees, site manager fees and a deposit starting immediately.
I second that. Sounds great.
Yeah, it does. That was good.
Alright, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Thank you.
Alright, and I will say the next go-round when we do, I, I don't know, I want to see how much things have increased, I guess, before.
And we can actually send that out to you. We can send that out.
I apologize. I meant to include that so you could compare it.
I mean, this all looks fine to me. I'm just curious, so. Alright, was that it?
That's it.
Oh my gosh, okay, make a motion to adjourn, I mean, and seek a motion to adjourn.
Make that motion to adjourn.
A second. Okay, all those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, it is a vote. Alright, good night, everyone. Thank you.